The March 13, 2024 regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen will come to order. You can join us in the lunch. All right, thank you. So we'll start with Inland, Wetlands and Watercourses Commission interview. And then after that, we'll move over to public comment if anyone is here for that. So we'll start with JD. Do you want to come up here and use the mic? And just so you guys know, we are, it's new for the Board of Selectmen. We're recording these now, so just so you know.
Good, I'm tiling my bathroom all day.
If you're ready, ready for prime time. So Deb, do you want to go?
Sure.
We'd like to know what pertinent experience you have serving on a board, commission, or in another volunteer capacity. And in responding, please expand on what roles you played and what impact you had.
Yeah, so I was living in New York for five years before I came back to take care of some family members here. And I was on one conservation nonprofit there, and that was mostly outreach. I think we talked about this last night. And of course, I have the National Nonprofit for the Alliance of Mystic River Watershed that we started here. And we all do everything for that because it's just so much to do. And of course, I've gotten a really great understanding of Stonington's committees by attending and by really trying to be as active as I can. And it's quite rewarding because I grew up nearby here. And you kind of have this feeling like, how do you do more? How do you help? And I'm finally starting to answer those questions. And that's great. What else was part of that question? What am I doing?
Your Board of Commission volunteer capacity, you talked about that, what roles you played and what impact you had.
Sure. I mean, we stopped a gas pipeline in New York. Is that relevant? It was the fifth phase of this project that National Grid was going to do. I could get really into that. I mean, you know, New York has this committee that regulates private utility companies and keeps them from building. So the one loophole that they have for that is anytime they're building infrastructures, there are constantly infrastructure projects to build. And we found this one case, this pipeline they were building right in the middle of COVID, where they were going to pipe in gas from Pennsylvania because there's no, any fossil fuel harvesting allowed in New York at all. And then put it on trucks and then drive those trucks back out to customers in Pennsylvania so that they could get a budget. I feel like we're getting off topic, though. But anyway, we shut it down.
We brought it up.
Yeah.
What is your opinion of the responsibilities and the time right of function of the inland wetlands and watercourses commission?
I have a brand-new respect for the functions and values of this committee, having just completed the UConn Municipal Training Course for it. So in advance of this, I wanted to do more about that. I really wish I had done it sooner. It lays out things incredibly clearly. And it does, it does a really great job. I think that even just regular people or developers should be taking this course because they could get through committees like that, like knowing, I mean, with the caveat that they would also have to be following the rules. But it's a lot more strict than I thought it was, which is good. And that's missing from the committee right now. I checked and none of them have completed this course.
Billy, I think one of them did.
Who, Dennis? No, I asked him specifically. Yeah. And it's going to be really valuable for that, especially because it's about to be made a law by next year, the HB 5218, 2518 something. And we hope it's going to go through just the way it is, is the riparian buffer is going to be instated. And then we'll have required training for, I think it makes at least one member. So I would be your member. And that ought to make the duties of that committee a lot simpler, too, with that riparian buffer. Because there's a lot of equivocating that goes on in that little gap. So I think it's really important, and I think it needs to be taken more seriously. Because wetlands conservation can't be treated the way shopping cart morale it is, which it feels like it is right now sometimes. It feels like, oh, it'd be great if you did this, but we can't stop you if you can't. Well, we can, we can stop them if they, if they want to damage the wetlands. And we need to take that more seriously.
Thank you, that was really helpful. So the last question is if you just want to expand on any other professional experience or specific skill set that you feel you'd bring to the commission?
Yeah, well, I mean, based on everything that I've been working on for the past three years, I've been volunteering with Avalonia. We just started a new survey, I mean, I started a new survey, I was just talking to Tobias about it this week, where we made notes of where we think amphibious breeding habitats and fertile pools were going to be last year. And now that we're in the breeding period for these amphibians, we're going to go out and double-check on them and try to build an index based on the conservation. So that's pretty cool. And it's going to build on something that they're going to do all kinds of brand writing and everything else for. I also, at the beginning of this year, was made a member of the Connecticut Association of Wetland Scientists. And that was just based on an interview and based on everything that I've learned, digging into my own backyard and everywhere else in town. So that was really great. I did not get to go to the annual meeting this year. But it's allowed me to network with some other people and create kind of a differential, too, which is also important. So looking at other communities that are finding ways to improve their water quality and protection for wetlands and natural resources. To name two that I can think of.
That was really helpful, thank you. Do you guys have any follow-up questions?
Can you expand on your affiliation with the Alliance, the Alliance for Mystic River Watershed, and how that may impact your ability to serve on the IWWC and could perhaps recuse us at some point?
Sure, that's a very fair question. Most of the work, when we first started that, I mean, I was the original founder for that. And the intention of that was really just to get more people involved in the process. I mean, I had just come off a situation where I was, I was experienced in some of the permit process or some of the environmental protections in town for the first time. And I wanted more people to feel that motivation that I was feeling. We've started to expand that, and we've got Maggie Ferberti, the Dynamo, running around creating these projects. So there's the Ale Wife project now, and there are a lot of conservation projects. But they are mostly for the benefit of everyone. They're mostly, what should I say, non-confrontational. I don't imagine anything will come up that would, that would require recusal based on that. And they're mostly in line with, I mean, she is very, works very closely with Representative Bumgarner. And so we are following, we are paralleling things that are happening at the state level. So, you know, we're not pushing for changes, you know, sweeping changes or anything like that. It's mostly kind of creating satellites, parallels of things that the state is already supporting.
And education.
Right, yeah.
No, I had a similar question, and I think you answered this. No, it's basically just with regard to conflicts. I mean, I spent 14 years on wetlands, so I know that there were a number of times that I actually had to recuse because of conflicts with other projects. So just wanted to make sure you, you know, you understand that.
No, of course. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I think it's a, it's a simple enough process and something that's covered, obviously, in the training course with a parliamentary procedure where, take a step back. I mean, I mean, currently, they, they're only core at two-thirds of the time anyway. So, I mean, well, anyway.
No, both of you. Thank you. Just because you brought up, and there's people actually here, I think it's tomorrow night, there's a training for counting the ale wives.
Right.
Maggie's putting together. So do you know what time that is? If anybody wants to go?
I don't.
Okay, well, take a look at the Mystic Watershed Alliance if you aren't familiar. Yeah, they're doing a training tomorrow night. If you're interested, I think, starting Friday through like maybe May, you can go down to Old Mystic River and help count the ale wives. So it's an interesting project.
I would do that.
I don't know either, but you'll find out tomorrow if anybody wants to go. JD, thank you.
Thank you.
Peter, you want to go up? And thank you both very much. And we don't hold it against you if you leave after you interview. We won't be making any decisions tonight.
JD.
Sure.
I'll ask the first question, if you have a number to ask. We'd like to know what pertinent experience you have serving on a board, commission, or in another volunteer capacity. And in responding, please expand on what's your role, what roles you played and what impact you had.
I've been on Board of Directors of the Stonington Country Club, been on the WPCA and Legerd, Board of Directors of Galesford Community Center, Shantakas Beach Club. Those are the committees I've served on.
Yeah, the second part was expand on what roles you played and what impact you had.
What roles I've played on those boards. Helped Stonington Country Club get built, goes through the whole process for wetlands, for planning and zoning, I've been involved there since the beginning. WPCA and Legerd worked on getting these grant money from the state and expanding this limited amount of served capacity the town had, and also expanding the water system. Board of Directors of Shantakas Beach Club, I was instrumental in taking a permit process to add ten good bands to it with DEEP and City of Rotten permit process. And Galesford Community Center was just a good thing to do because my daughters are going to school there.
What's your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Inland, Wetlands and Watercourses Commission?
Well, I know the regulations. I know the regulations. And I think their responsibility is following those regulations. Wetlands are wetlands, but they're not all the same. And the commission, I think it's done a pretty good job of understanding that. You can have a wetland be a cornfield. I've seen that plenty of times. Should, should that fact stop somebody from using that cornfield? No, or a hay field. But at the same time, you can get a real nice swamp, and there should be protection for the swamp and stream belts. But you need to pay attention to the experts that are making your presentation and understand what your regulations are and how to work with what you're being presented and read through what you're being presented to make a proper decision.
Thank you. And then the last one is just if you wanted to expand on any relevant professional experience or specific skill set that you, that you bring to the commission?
I'm a licensed land surveyor. I've worked with soil scientists, developers, and commissions probably for 40 years. I walked 50 foot track of land in North Stonington today, as a matter of fact. So I know land, I know the regulations, and I think I can bring a lot to this commission, unbiased opinions. That will help, we should make some good decisions and help the town.
Thank you. Any follow-up?
Just sort of a similar question. Obviously, you could run across issues that you'd have to recuse yourself. Do you understand?
I understand that, and I've already turned down a couple of jobs for giving the potential to be on this board involving weapons. And I will recuse myself if I see the potential for a conflict.
Yeah, could you just expand on that a little bit more? Just because I expect your professional breadth is pretty wide. And you deal with developers, you deal with lawyers, you deal with soil scientists, you deal with inland wetlands commissions, you know, you deal with everybody in the field. And I just, I'm concerned that there would be connections with a lot of different folks making applications to the wetlands commission. And, you know, how you, how you would view those perhaps distant connections?
Well, the wetlands commission, I think, most of the applications I've seen the last few years are just in the single-family homes. I don't know of any developments that have come through. I'm mostly, when it comes to that, dealing with developers or helping individuals take applications through the process. If I run against an attorney I've had a good relationship with or bad relationship with, I'll know how to step aside, too. I'm very sensitive to that.
And as I said, we should have asked for JD, too, if you have any questions for us.
Well, I think JD would appreciate this, too. Does this commission know what the wetlands commission is there to do? They're not there as a conservation commission, they're not there to protect saltwater, they're there for inland wetlands and watercourses. They're not there to protect anything other than what the regulation is called for. And they've got to be able to understand that. And this commission does a pretty good job of it.
I'm a former chairman of all wetlands commissioners. I do actually know what they do. But yes, thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for that.
JD, did you have any questions we should have asked you?
No, but I found that the, that the ale wives tomorrow at 5:00 PM at the Hyatt Place, which is like behind the McDonald's across the cemetery.
Thank you. Got a little PSA right there. Well, thank you both very much. So typically, at our next Board of Selectmen meeting, we make a decision. So thank you very much. All right, next up, any public comment? Len, did you have anything? Do you want to just introduce yourself for the record?
Hi, it's, it's Len White, I live in 77 Collins, Rhode Island. And so I addressed a letter to you, and so I just wanted to give you the opportunity. If you had any questions for me, that's why, that's why I'm here.
Since you're on the air, do you want to just do a quick summary of what your letter was?
Yeah, so the, it's about improvements to the, to the budget book. And I was a finance professional before I retired, and so I spent a lot of time with that, even served on the Board of Finance. And so the, I have in-depth knowledge about this stuff, and so I wanted to try and help you out. Because the key, a key issue here is that Danielle, as the first selectman, has the authority to, you know, to put a chart into the, into the budget book, or to take a chart out, or to, the presentation is actually the responsibility of the, of the first selectman, how the presentation goes. So we have this budget book, and it's got, you know, the, the strength of it is, it's got tons of detail, tons of it, everything is in there. The problem is, it's like getting shot, getting hit with a fire hose. There's, there's no summary that, that, you know, of the, you know, the key pieces of it. And so the, in that letter I sent to you, there were some charts that showed, that I actually put the numbers in from the budget. So those numbers are real numbers that are in there. And, and the, the interesting thing is about fund balance and the use of fund balance. And so when the, when the budget is prepared, there's, you know, revenues, the taxes are collected, then you have expenses. And then if you have a loss, not enough revenue to cover your expenses, the expenses would include CapEx, the SIP. And so then there's, you have, you know, a negative number. And so if, for example, last year, there was, there was a negative number of 1.5 million. But the department heads brought their budgets in under, taxes are collected at a rate of 98.75, but you actually collect them at like 99.9. And so there was revenue surpluses, and there was budget surpluses. And so you actually, instead of spending a million and five in fund balance, you retained 2.5 million. So 2.5 million dropped to the bottom line as a surplus and went into the fund balance. So fund balance went up. And, and so budget to actual is what I'm talking about. And what wasn't in that letter, and I'd just like to leave this with you, and then I'll, then I'll be finished, but the, this, this chart that's in the current budget book talks about unassigned fund balance. It doesn't talk anything about assigned fund balance, or even about what fund balance amount is. And the, you know, this is the chart that shows two months operating and, you know, as a percentage of, of fund balance. And, and so this chart, because it's talking about fund balance and use of fund balance, well, if we're not using fund balance, if we're, because we're using a collection rate that's, that's very low and very conservative, we've got a big margin of safety, the department heads bring their budgets in under, then this chart is, is wrong. And, you know, is really material misstatement. And that could be corrected, should be corrected, I think, you know, this year. The other, the other charts in there, well, this is all at the discretion of, of the first selectman. And so I'll, I'll leave this, leave this with you. And, because it didn't make it into the, into the letter. And, you know, the real, the real question that, you know, I highlighted there is, is, you know, the title is unassigned fund balance, and the question is, what is assigned fund balance? And then down here, it says, assigned fund balance is technically use of fund balance plus the prior year encumbrances. And so the, you know, that's, that's the, that's the number of it. And if fund balance is, is not being used because you're drawing a surplus, then this chart is wrong. And so.
No, thank you. I got you in 11 points, and I'm a very visual person and not a financial person. So, you know, I do preach the ideas of using the charts.
Thank you. And just to share, to be fully transparent, we did talk before the meeting, and hopefully we're going to set up a follow-up meeting to maybe at least see if we can get this in for a follow-up conversation. And then maybe once the budget meetings are done or calmed down, to really start looking at next year's budget book while it's still fresh in mind, and maybe make some of the other changes.
You have your word for the, uh...
Thank you very much. Any other questions, Len? Anything else, Len? Any other public comments? We will move on to, could I get a motion to approve the special meeting that is February 20th?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Stacy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, could I also get a motion to approve the special meeting that is of March 7?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Again.
That was a quick meeting.
Yeah. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. So just under correspondence, we received applications from Suzanne Madison and William Feith for the Stonington Cemetery Commission. So that's exciting, that's our newest commission, and applications are still open, if anybody's interested in listening. And then also, John Holstein did withdraw his application from the Charter Revision Commission following our interviews and presentation, and I think just shared the extended timeline that we were looking at into November and his travel schedule, it probably wasn't going to work as well as originally intended. So that's under correspondence. Then under appointments, could I get a motion to appoint Lisa Reed to the Stonington Housing Authority?
Second.
Any discussion on Lisa?
No, I appreciate her interest.
Yeah, no, it was great. And I did have a quick call with her, but she seemed really excited to, to get started. I think they might actually have their first meeting tomorrow. That's timely. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, so, whole business, Charter Revision Commission. So I'm going to just go through a few key things, and then we'll open it up for a discussion. So just to share with everyone, we're talking about opening up the charter, which is basically what governs how we govern in Stonington. And so we're going to discuss the composition of the commission and then potentially vote to open it today. So in order to establish the Charter Revision Commission, we need to approve a resolution that formally establishes the commission, including the number of members, appointing the members, naming a temporary chairperson, outlining the proposed revisions at a high level, and provide a date that the draft report needs to be submitted. So I thought we could start with a discussion on the number, then we could discuss, starting with Deb, and then going over to Ben, and then ending with me, kind of our thoughts on the appointments of the now seven people, taking out John. And then we could discuss, then we can make a vote there, and then we could discuss the temporary chairperson, discuss the proposed revisions, any changes you want to see there, and then discuss the draft report date. And then we can vote on the resolution if you guys agree on that. Want to change anything about that?
No.
Nope.
So number of members, I know we went back and forth between five and seven, so I thought I'd open it up to you guys to, to talk real squareway.
I'm for five.
I'm for five. This is going to be easy. I'm not going, five, okay, I agree, I'm fine. So we'll wait, you don't need to do any, anything with that, no action either.
When you, it's all in the resolution, so when you approve the resolution, that's all for us.
It's perfect, all right. Oh, yeah, I see it, sorry. Okay. So do you want to start with discussion on, and again, maybe just to start, we really appreciate everyone who applied. It was a fantastic turnout, people ended up, some people ended up pulling out their applications for different reasons, largely around timeline. But it just, it was wonderful to see so many different people interested, so now we have to make some cuts.
So, sure, I'll start, I made some notes. So because I'm a scientist, I do things kind of a different way. And it was definitely a challenging decision, there was a lot of information to consider. So I made this spreadsheet, using all the information, looking at resumes, conversations that I had with the applicants, results of the interviews, a lot of other research that I did. And I want to thank them all for the work, because it's been a lot of work even getting to this point. So I was aiming for a balance of experience between volunteers and professional experience, knowledge and participation in town government, areas of the town. And what I came up with, I basically came up with something that covers four of the five districts for where they live, and all five, if you consider where they work.
Oh. You are a scientist.
Any special experience or skill set? And then I also obviously looked at political affiliation or non-affiliation, just to make sure that we have a balance here. So in no special order. This is what I came up with. So the people, and do you want me to, I'll say the name and then kind of what they, I feel like they bring to it? So first, Ray Treviassi, he was a member of the previous Charter Commission, which I think is really important, kind of for a transition. I also think it's really important to have an attorney in the mix. So Lynn Young, Lynn has many, many years on multiple local boards, Board of Finance, PNC, WPCA, PCD, housing opportunities. She is a current member of the Board of Finance. Another limitation I didn't list on my list was you can only have one seated member of a commission, so.
Electing.
Electing, electing commission, yes. June Strunk, she's a former member of the Board of Selectmen, which I also think gives an important perspective. She's got years on other commissions, PNC, Board of Finance, she's got a lot of familiarity with senior issues, with all the work on commission aging with PNC. David Lee, David's a retired businessman, and he really, I feel like he brings a fresh perspective to the board. But I have worked with him in the past, and he is a hard worker with a lot of volunteer experience. Marsha Standish, former town employee, which I think is a really important perspective, given what we're asking them to consider, and her experience at Connecticut Office of Policy and Management gives her a good understanding kind of on a statewide issue of some of these things. So that's my thought.
Research, no, that's great. Thank you for that explanation. So Ben, over to you.
Yeah, I think this is going to be pretty quick. So I think, I think Deb and I are pretty much on the same page, for many of the same reasons. The only member that I would differ on, and I love Lynn and everything she's done for the town and all the boards and commissions that she's on, but since I put the word out to the ETC to put up some applicants, and Chris Johnson stepped up to the plate and kind of put his name forward, I can't believe there may be one in the people that sit on the board. So we go with Chris Johnson, Ray Kevasachi, who's a, as you mentioned, prior experience on the Charter Revision Commission, and that is early. Marsha Standish, for all the reasons that she specified. So many, too many to, uh, rehash. June Strunk, for all of her experience, of course, and all her other boards and commissions that she's had, I have so much to include in this election and that data.
Thank you, guys. No, I agree. I think they're the same people. I struggled between Lynn and Chris. If we had a seven-member board, I would have loved to have both of them on. And, but I think at the end of the day, for me, Lynn, just how much experience she's had, and just, yeah, that's definitely. and just, yeah, that depth of knowledge there that I think is just, you know, hard to, to pull away from. But I really appreciate Chris getting involved and hopefully he'll still engage that commission with ideas or thoughts, as, you know, hopefully will other people who applied and maybe either weren't selected or had pulled out. So, yeah, I think that might actually be simpler. So I think in the end, just to, we'll repeat it when we do the resolution, but it sounds like we have enough votes for Ray, Lynn, June, David, and Marcia. So we'll get to that one. But anything else you wanted to add?
I agree. I just, you know, it's really, it's an honor to have these people basically mostly on a first-name basis, really true leaders in the community. I would be all set for it. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, no, it was great. And again, just a thanks to everybody who applied and also came to interview. It was not an easy decision, but I think I loved your breakdown and it was similar, just different pieces that they brought to the table. So that's great. All right, so we have to name a temporary chairperson. I don't think it really matters, but the minute they meet, they'll name their own chairperson. I didn't put any thought into that.
So my only thought on that, and it actually, I think it either could be Ray or Marcia since both attended the previous meetings, but I think it should be somebody that is familiar with the previous meeting. So I don't.
Yeah, I'd be satisfied with that one.
Marcia, you're here. Do you want it or do you want to define it?
I think we, I'll, I'll refer to Ray. He doesn't want to.
Okay. And again, just temporary, just for that first meeting and then you guys will vote. Okay, so we'll make it Ray for now. Ray?
Aye.
And then the proposed revision. So I think, hopefully you guys had time to look through.
Not much.
The outline, sorry. I have too much on. We did look through it?
I read it.
All right, the edits. But basically what we're supposed to do is give them, you know, obviously the outline of what we're looking and then I thought it would be helpful to actually go through the charter and make specific comments based on where other town staff members have brought things up, where people have raised things, and where I saw things, some things were even just like grammatical. But the big thing, so outline and proposed revisions was changing town clerk to a higher position. And again, I'll start with this. The idea is that we're outlining potential proposed changes that we're asking them to look into, not necessarily saying this is what should happen. That's up to them once they do it and they do the research and they engage people, but these are the areas we're specifically asking them to look into. So one, changing town clerk to a higher position that includes a full-scale professional hiring process. Same for changing tax collector to a higher position that includes a full-scale professional hiring process. Changing Board of Selectmen, including first selectmen from a two-year to a four-year term. Adding of two alternate members to the Water, Pollution, and Control Authority. Making the charter gender neutral. And then the additional proposed changes, I was trying to find a way to kind of encompass all those other smaller edits. So throughout the charter, there were issues identified by members of the town staff as well as the first selectmen that are recommended for the Charter Revision Commission to look at modifying. They are noted with the edits to the charter document. And so I will stop there and ask for discussions or questions or comments on that.
Yeah, I just, a little bit of clarification maybe necessary on changing director to department head.
Okay, yeah. I wasn't sure on that. It was a way to give some more flexibility where when we say it's a director, and that's a specific title, but then other departments might not choose to have a director as the title. So I thought that's something they could talk with town staff.
Is that what it does? To name a director?
Well, not every department has a director, so, or needs to have a director. So they need, all need a department head. They all need somebody to lead the department, like the building official. They're not a director. The tax assessor isn't, the title isn't director. So they are the head of the department. So that was, it's a small thing, but it's just like a clarification, because then some people do call and say, hey, you don't have a director. The charter says you need a director. And they go, well, you really just need a head of the department, somebody who's overseeing that department, who reports up and is in the org chart of where everyone reports. But having the specific title, or it could be a footnote too to say, if it's not a director, it's a department head.
I, I guess Deb's the question of implanting, in planning department, who would be the director?
So the town planner.
We don't know.
Yeah.
He's not really the department head.
He is. Everybody reports to him. And we, that was changed five years ago. So everyone in that department reports to the town planner. So, and I understand in past years, when we had Jason Vincent as the director, and he left, it was never filled, and he came back again, and then he was director again, and then the position completely changed to a different position, which is now vacant. So I think, again, giving management and department some flexibility to decide what they need, but they all need a department head. But so for the purposes of planning for, I mean, for at least five years now, the town planner, before Keith now sets him, has been the department head. So they're responsible for putting the budget together. Everyone in the department reports to them. And so, yeah.
Is that spelled out somewhere other than?
In, in union agreement and contract agreement, because the town planner is in a spy union. Yeah, Marcia?
But the directors are not part of the union?
Typically, yeah.
It's outside the union. And then the last change, the assessor became the department planner and the director.
Not reporting to the finance director. So we all, we all are under the chief executive officer, which is the first selectman. But those that have department planning was, finance was a director. The assessor was a director. Social services, the tax collector reporting to the finance director. The town clerk was an elected official, so basically they would report, they would have the chief executive officer. Planning and zoning, the building official was really reportable, first selectman. And then you had the Department of Public Works, and that was the department. But again, it was, it was a separation. So you were also part of the administrative team. So as a director, you would attend the, you had selectmen where you weren't allowed to go to the meeting unless you were part of the department. So you lose, especially in the assessors department, you would lose contact with the rest of the departments. We wouldn't, and you deal with all of them. So it was important to be a part of that. So that was some, some of the reason. But like, once you go into that, well, you're out of the union.
Oh, you're using that Marcia?
Okay, two thirty. But again, I think that would be another summary where we'd want them to talk with the director of Administrative Services to get like a deeper dive. That might not be the right way to do it, but it should be looked at to be clarified because as other first selectmen come in, we want to be sure that it's really clear. We found some things that aren't completely clear. We wouldn't want, this is a chance to clarify things. Anything else?
No, I thought everything else, you know, just things for them to discuss, they all made sense.
Just because you guys don't have it in front of you, some things are just, they can talk to the director of finance about this or talk to, go to a board of finance members and get their input or to register our voters. So there are different pieces in there where we want, hopefully the commission will engage the relevant people to get their opinions on it.
Yeah. The disposition, I didn't get to, like the current level.
Five thousand. So it's five thousand. So I think I just added the one in front. Again, that might not be the right number, but to go to a town meeting and pay all the expenses and all the legal adds and everything for the $5,000, we were like, that's really low, but what is the right number? And so again, that's something they can look at, but.
So that was what it's, they can look at these things and what's in here now, but obviously we change.
Yeah, and really should. Yeah. Anything else? Okay. So then we have a resolution. If you want, I can read through the formal resolution or summarize.
I'll talk about the draft.
Oh, sorry, the date. So Stacy and I worked on a timeline. And basically we need to, in the resolution, name when they have to get the draft report back to the Board of Selectmen. And we thought April 1st, 2025 was the safest date, working backwards from when everything is due to the state and our legal adds and everything. So are you guys timed with April 1st?
And there's, I'm not saying this all the time, but there's no reason they could have it done before that. It's just not.
They could get it to us before that, but if for some reason, once we set this date, if they were like, we need another two weeks, it's done. So if they wanted to push it out kind of as far as we could, but yes, they, the great question, they could turn it in sooner.
Just not.
Just not pass that. And April 1st came like a weird date.
Fine.
I'm okay with that.
All right. Okay. So do you guys want me to read through the whole resolution or summarize it? Yeah, I can do my summary.
Summarize it, that's great.
Yeah.
I'm trying to get to it.
Have it on my pad.
It's like, it starts to like be a queue if I resolve.
That's right.
All right. Okay, maybe before. No, I think it's maybe after the charter, maybe the very end. So essentially we need to say how many members? So is it five members? And we have to name the members. So we have Ray Trevasi, Lynn Young, June Strunk, David Lee, and Marcia Standish. And we confirm that not more than one-third of you appointees hold any other public office in the town of Stonington, and not more than a bare majority of the appointees are a member of one political party. I think we met those requirements. Furthermore, Ray Trevasi will be the temporary chairperson until a permanent one can be selected. And essentially, we're asking them to look at the following items, which we just went through, which were the changes to the town clerk, tax collector, Board of Selectmen term, alternates on the WPCA, the gender neutral term in the charter, and then the additional proposed changes throughout the charter. And then the more legal wording of be it further resolved and that they will submit the draft report to the Stonington Town Clerk not later than April 1st, 2025, so that our board can complete our final actions on any review and then they can do their magic. And then the charter will be kind of finalized no later than September 1st, 2025. Right? That is really it. If you guys have any other questions, could I get a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Any discussion?
No, I just was going to say, also in the summary, that it will go to the referendum.
Oh, thank you. Yes. Yes, it will go to them for the November ballot for 2025, for the referendum. All right, good question. Anything else? All right, for better or worse. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, right. Dave, I will live in information. Let's go. Okay, next up, we have a building permit fee waiver from the Motion Community YMCA. We received a request for a building permit fee waiver of $3,961 associated with the conversion of the existing tennis courts into pickleball courts at the Maye family branch. This is the first request the YMCA has given us since we adopted the policy capping nonprofit requests, building fee waivers, which we capped at the $10,000. So could I get a motion to approve the building permit fee waiver in the amount of $3,961?
So moved.
Any questions on that?
Hopefully they didn't.
Do the tennis player, I'm bummed. My question is, do the neighbors know?
Yeah, exactly.
There's no really super close, but they'll have to go through.
It's across the water.
I'm going to hear it. Ding, ding, ding. I don't know, but I don't know if they'll have to move it for that.
Yeah, that's not a super.
That's a bad group.
Yeah, but for us.
We have a lot of confidence. Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wish them luck. Okay, we also got a request from our, internally, because we follow all of our same rules, a request from Human Services Rec Department in regards to waiving the building permit fee for this, the new Stoneman Park AED project in the amount of $49.78. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, the motion carries. And in case you don't know, we did just install a number of different AEDs at different locations around the fields in Stoneman Park and kind of self-prompted, and you got a 911, it will unlock the box, you do what you have to do. But that was a great partnership with Captain Schneider, Sergeant Hirsch, Rich Ward, and others to kind of get that over there and try and like keep them, and Peter Anderson while he was here, to kind of improve the safety over there.
What, the all sorts of things?
We can't, but it's like the part. Anybody? But the thing you put on is somebody that's having.
Thank you.
Marcia, you are so useful. Can you just sit here and? Thank you. Okay, so all of the favor, you need a very.
Aye.
All right, and then, like, um, comments? Yeah. No comments, not at first. Okay, do you have any comments or updates?
Not really, honestly. We've, we've, mostly been just going to the Board of Finance meetings and following that and that's probably headed to after the meeting tonight. And honestly, doing my homework for the Charter Commission, it's been, it's been a lot of other stuff. So nothing else really.
Yeah, just recording on my heards and missions back then too, a lot of them missed out. So Architectural Design Review Board is in need of two alternate members. This is now going to the meeting this week and I've reached out to number, numerous qualified residents this week, multiple received, at least one maybe two applications, but the board seems to settle for the time issues and it is to have some answers. PCCs moving forward with very aggressive changes to regulations, changing construction and flood zones and wetland buffers. And while I fully publicly support this after I have some fears of the proposals, they turn out to be so extreme that it fails to be able to support. I also feel the changes that are of this consequence should be forwarded to the UFCB and also to the UFCB. The new PCO, UFCB should be completed before this. I have a fruitful conversation with Phil Seaman last week regarding some residents' concerns with waste collection, you know, specifically recycling. As a result, I'm looking for recycling to have, you know, Amanda, she's great, she knows my questions. I'm still pursuing the crosswalk on 27th and Lydian Street. I've been trying to use the town engineer to discuss this possibility, which is not the only cause, I was hoping to get this up.
Yeah, we can talk, he is beyond over capacity.
Absolutely. Absolutely agree.
And I think it really is a police commission matter and then with, and then with the state road.
Well, they, yeah, the police commission, it's before the police commission, they're supposed to discuss it tomorrow night, but anyway, it is before them, but I was just hoping to get that information on, reach out to the cross. It's a state, actually, it's on board, town, who's going to be the, the rail, the state for, for crosswalk.
I would think just reaching out to Jeff, the new director of public works for those types of things, and he has more bandwidth and also Chris has been kind of repeatedly asking all of us, including we, to go through him as the director, and then he can help with pick off what he can work on versus what Chris should, because he is just so over capacity right now. But, and Jeff having also worked in New Haven and other places, he might have a good.
Sure, I'll try him tomorrow. The Housing Opportunities Commission seems to also have adopted a number of numbers together for regular meetings, so I hope that we can find a place with the start of experience, that we continue to work with. And lastly, I want to, Stoneman Hall and Manton Commission this week. And that was really enlightening, all the work they did to have a, you know, the most open, the Architectural Commission, but it's going to be up there. And I learned that while there's still warm lawns available in the harbor, there are not sufficient options for taking these to the tenders. And the commission is working on efforts to provide dinghy dock, hopefully somewhere around Times Dock or Dog Park or something. I couldn't stay long enough to immediately see where that happened in that process. I couldn't stay long enough to read, see where the path in that process is, but hopefully at some point, you know, we can support the, the access to the harbor. Very important, and there's surplus warrants, a lot of people can use.
No, let's make two quick announcements. So, I'm meeting with the harbor board next week to go look at locations and to talk about that, so that will be good. And then I talked to the chair of the Architectural Design Review Board yesterday, and he was so grateful and excited that you attended the meeting, you know, loves this man, and also mentioned about the meeting. So, I actually reached out to someone, he was mentioning landscape architect, and I guess there was a woman who's now working for Kent Frost, who lives in Stonington. She's been in Boston for a long time and just came back. So, I'm gonna connect her. She was interested, so I'm gonna connect her with Michael.
Yeah, they said they, I think, I thought they said they heard Chad very many times in the past.
Okay, she seemed interested, so, so as of today, so I'm gonna connect them. Yeah, she was here and left and came back.
She's married to Kevin Scanlon.
Okay. But if you also reach out, that's good, because maybe you can...
Yeah, the harbor tab, it's one group that I have used a lot positively, that we can still update on that, and also history.
Okay, no problem. That's really good. I'll keep my brief. Budget has been taken up, I'd say, most of the time. I also want to reiterate for people, if anybody is listening, you know, the purpose of putting out such a high budget increase, just under 12%, was for discussion purposes with the Board of Finance, so that way we can have a public discussion with Board of Finance members, with department heads, all in the public eye, and to really talk about, have our long-term capital needs, with the understanding that, which we mentioned at our own sit meeting, that millions we're gonna need to come out. And so, you know, the goal is to have a, a pretty small increase in the actual overall budget, probably around four or five percent overall, not 11-plus percent. So, again, just to reiterate, you know, we've tried to put out communications about that, but understandably, people, you know, see one number and then, you know, concern sets in. So, again, to reiterate, no one is intending to put up 11% budget increase. It's just so we can have that public discussion, and then we likely will be needing to talk about bonding once market rates, kind of numbers improve. But there's just a lot of bridges and drainage and infrastructure issues mostly, so that's the, the large part of that. So, just to reiterate that, also just to, I think a good bit of time has also been spent trying to work on some testimony for different state bills, so different organizations or our own representatives have reached out asking for testimony on different issues, as have some of our statewide municipal organizations. So, I've submitted different testimonies on a range of things, including comploisting, which was nice the other night, that Jill Senior helped me with, so that takes some time. And, and they also were just working through, also trying to identify future grants for a lot of these infrastructure projects. But the freshly directed funding application did come out today, so we've been kind of preparing for this and looking through old versions, because they don't usually change that much, to try and align where potential projects might fit. And so, maybe at the next meeting, I'll try and update you guys' application due sometime in like mid-April. So, I think those are the big things. Stacy, any other questions? I introduced Nora. Did you introduce her?
Yes.
All right, so we're excited of Nora here. She's a student at Stonington, and she's gonna be doing her, the senior project, kind of with us, and then you potentially really focus on the charter in particular. But we're excited, so thank you for coming.
Thanks for having me.
Anything else? Any questions?
Oh, I know what I was gonna say. What I, I appreciate that there's the bit on the website where residents can actually send input on the budget this year, because we've seen a lot of things come through, which is great. Because more people are engaged.
Is that where, opposing middle-term?
Yes, the Board of Finance set up an email for the first time. They haven't done that as far back as we can remember, and so then they're collecting them and then kind of sharing them with us as a...
Which is great, because usually, you know, you don't see as many, and people don't realize, you know, they only know they can come in topic, public hearings, but now they have an opportunity to show their opinion before that.
Yeah, we gotta...
So, hopefully, so tonight we'll have our other budget meeting right after this. We might have one more after that, and then we'll, the Board of Finance will send the revised budget out, and March 26th will be the chance for public input before we finalize the budget. So, if you are interested or want to talk about it with any of your friends, family, or neighbors, it's a, it's a great way to really realize how all of your tax dollars are spent. So, it's an interesting process. But again, with that, there's nothing else?
When will we know when this will be second?
Tonight, they'll decide tonight. They'll probably talk about it at the start of the meeting. So, we'll see. Thank you. Thank you, Tyler. Thank you.